Perfect timing. We will go ahead and start the meeting, and we will start with a roll call.
Mr. Fuenios. Dr. Bonebrake. Mrs. Schmidt. Dr. Schumacher. Dr. Beeson. I don't see Mr. Tatum, and I know Mrs. Bowley is absent. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And we will move towards the next spot on our agenda with the executive session, so I'm looking for a motion for executive session.
I move the Board of Education of USD 501 recess into executive session for 30 minutes to discuss confidential personnel matters pursuant to the personnel exception of the Kansas Open Meetings Act to protect the privacy of the individuals discussed. The board will return to open session in the boardroom at 6:01 PM. The superintendent and executive staff are invited into the executive session.
And do I have a second for that? Dr. Beeson. Any other discussion? Dr. Bonebrake is upset about the clock. Any other discussions remain to the motion at hand. If not, we'll look for a vote.
All votes are in, and the motion carries. That means what does he look at? And just imagine if it were up there.
Okay, we will go ahead and get back into the meeting. And I believe our next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. There's some students.
Sir. There you go. And we'll just want everybody to see you. Oh, there they go.
Oh, can't wait to go up.
No, they can see you.
Okay, cool, cool, cool.
Thirty thousand people watching.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And that was our amazing student of the month, senior of the month that you'll be hearing from later.
Great, thank you. So we will move down the agenda. Our next item is the adoption of the agenda. And so I'm just looking for a motion.
I move the board adopt the agenda as presented.
And a second? Dr. Beeson. And any discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Okay, and I can turn it back over to Dr. Anderson.
And we're going to start our video so you can, oh, our senior of the month video. We're going to start with students first. So you get a chance to meet the young man who did the excellent Pledge of Allegiance. So please enjoy the video. And this will be online debuting tonight on our YouTube and on our TV station. Following that, Mr. Dick will come up and introduce our senior of the month and our senior of the month, and Mr. Dick will take it from there.
Hello, my name is Jackson Cowden, and I'm a senior at Topeka High School. I'm a part of the swim and dive team. I've been a part of the track and field program for four years. I did cross country for two years. I've been a part of Link Crew and Link Crew High Fives.
When you kind of describe Jackson, you think about all of the things that he's involved in. Jackson, I think, is far and away probably the best diver that Topeka High School has ever had on the men's side, or at least has had for a considerable amount of time.
Jackson is incredibly talented, but he's also very humble. He's one of those that is able to excel academically, in sports, with Link Crew.
He does everything the way it's supposed to be done. And, you know, to watch them achieve those expectations is probably the greatest thing. Jackson always achieves everything that he wants to achieve that year.
He's been in TCalc, I believe, for three years. He's part of the long public safety pathway and has moved into the web and digital pathway, which I think he's really enjoying. I always say at TCalc, as kids get into pathways, the worst outcome is not finding out as you got into it that this is not what I want to do with my future. That's a perfectly fine outcome, and Jackson has taken advantage of that.
I just like editing photos, taking photos. I like to write, too. So, I mean, whether I find a job in, like, sports journalism or just regular journalism, or even just doing artistic photography. And I feel like there's a whole bunch of things in that field that I'm really interested in, so I just like to take in as much as I could.
I'm not sure that he needs all that much advice from me. I think he's able to handle himself. He's looking into the colleges that are going to be right for him. He's talking to coaches, and he's doing a great job of finding his own place.
I'm planning on running track in college. I'm not decided where I'm going to go just yet, but I've taken a couple of visits to Benedict Dean and St. Mary's, and I've got one coming up to Nebraska Wesleyan. So we're going to see what happens.
Just keep doing what you're doing, Jackson. There's no magic to this. The magic is in effort, and Jackson always gives effort.
I would say just keep being who you are, Jackson. You're a great guy. You're a good student. You work hard and pursue the things that you enjoy with the same passion that you have while you're in high school, and success will find you.
I think a lot of people take pride in the fact that they go to Topeka High. I feel like I've gotten a lot of good opportunities. I know they hooked me up with TCalc. Obviously, that helps out a ton. I'd say just get involved, and if you're graduating this year, just, I'd say, try to find something that makes you happy and find people that make you happy, too.
Jackson, come on up, buddy. We've got your certificate for Senior of the Month. Congratulations. And a gift from Topeka High for you. They usually want to see what's in there, so might as well open it up and show it off. While we're doing that, everybody, this is Jackson. Jackson's a wonderful young man. And really is one of the best divers we've ever had. So I believe you placed 11th at the state dive meet this year. So we just finished that a couple of weeks ago. Again, like he said in the video, he's not sure where he's going to college at yet, but he's going to major in communications. Has really enjoyed that. So since you aren't sure of a college yet, we gave you some Topeka High things.
Thank you. Sorry, I feel like I'm taking a little.
You're all right.
Nice. It's got a bunch of signings on the back, too. So, nice, thank you, guys.
You're welcome. Congratulations. And I'm sure there will be a few questions from the board for you. So I'll give you to them.
Thank you, Jackson. I'm going to see if my fellow board members have questions for you. Mr. Tatum.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jackson, welcome and congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet, you bet. So we've heard a lot of good things about you this evening and know a bit of your story from what we saw on the video. But, you know, everybody needs inspiration, mentors. And so I'm just kind of curious, who are the folks who inspired you and took you under your wing and helped you to excel?
I'd say the biggest people have probably been some of my family members. My uncle comes to mind as one of those people, my mom, my dad. Unfortunately, my dad did pass away when I was pretty young, but I've heard so many great stories about him, so I just strive to be like him whenever I can be. So, yeah.
That's amazing. Keep up the great work. And since we're on the topic, do you have anyone who's important to you that's here this evening that we can also recognize as contributors to your success?
I'd say just leadership at Topeka High. I know Mr. Dick, he's been insanely nice to me whenever I see him in the hallways greeting people and everything like that. So I like to be positive like that, so, yeah.
All right. Congratulations again, and keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Other, other questions? Dr. Baumbrake.
Jackson, which sports are you wishing to participate in in college? I like to tell people there's three Ss in college, and you do two of them very well. I had to quit track after one year from various reasons, but there's studies, sports, and social. You can do two of them great.
Yeah, I'm planning on participating in track and field when I get to college.
I hope you have more energy than I did.
Other questions? Mr. Munoz.
A serious one and a silly one. I'll start with the silly one. With photography, I took photography, and I was talking with my daughter. Do you still do the old school in the darkroom, or is it all digital?
It's all digital now.
I know, I figured. I just wanted to double check. So anyway, so my question is, you know, Mr. Tatum talked about the fact that outside of school, you need individuals to be in your corner. Is there anyone during your time here at 501 that sort of you recall with fondness that sort of helped you to be where you're at today?
I think my track coach, Candy Carey, there's been a lot of times where he's pulled me aside and, like, just gave me little pieces of advice that I thought have really helped boost me and helped kind of set me on the right track. So I'd say him.
Dr. Beeson.
Thanks for being here tonight. Congratulations.
Thank you.
What's, several things struck me. But first, I just wanted to comment. My father died when I was a kid also, and I really love how you spoke about your dad. And it sounds like even if you haven't had an earthly relationship with him, your relationship has continued through these stories. And I am so glad that you continue to be inspired by him. The last thing you said in the video was something about encouraging others to do what makes them happy and finding people that make you happy. What makes you happy?
I think just, see, I feel like there's a lot of things that make me happy. I feel like interacting with people. I feel like doing the sports that I love. I feel like studying the things that I really enjoy. So I don't know. I don't know if that gives, like, a direct answer to the question, but I feel like there's a lot of things out there that I can't really think of off the top of my head right now.
I think if a lot of things make you happy, that's great. Well, congratulations and best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Jackson, I wanted to ask how you got into diving. That is not necessarily a common sport. And it seems like you do it really well. And in your blurb, it sounds like you have some training, and you've learned how to control your body and the movement of your body. So can you tell us about that a little bit?
Yeah, so I actually started my freshman year. My sister was a lifeguard over at Gage Pool, the one close by. And I used to go there, like, all the time. I would stay there, like, during the day. And I always loved doing, like, flips and things whenever I was a kid. So I know my mom enrolled me in those, like, parkour ninja classes. So I always loved doing flips and everything like that. So my sister talked to Mr. Bennett, who was the head swim coach, and he had mentioned how they needed a diver. So I kind of, I'd ran cross country for him, and he had been in my ear about it. So I was like, man, you know, I'll give this a shot. So, yeah.
The rest is history. Yeah. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming today. We're very proud of you.
Thank you.
Now, Jackson's mother is doing conferences right now. She's a teacher at State Street?
Yes.
All right. So when you asked about who's in the room, his mom is in a classroom at State Street. I talk about commitment of a family, and so she'll be able to watch this online. And we, any other final comments you want to say, Jackson?
I think she is watching right now, so if she is, I'm going to say, hi, Mom. But, yeah, besides that, I'd just say thank you guys for having me. Yeah.
You and your mother are exceptional, and you have such a bright future. We're proud of you, sir.
Thank you guys so much.
Boy, that's some good stuff. As we move on to the very next item, I'm going to ask Mr. Reynolds to come on up. Now, Ms. Wallace, Mr. Reynolds is known across the state. Am I correct? Was there an acknowledgement in January that we want to make sure that we mention here?
Yes. So he was named Kansas Educational Theater Association Administrator of the Year.
Some good stuff. Now, we have a proclamation, but we know that proclamations can be boring just to read the proclamation and go on to the next item. So they have, Mr. Reynolds has a presentation he'd like to give. And you may have noticed, if you're online and you've been reading the newspaper, so many pieces about our fine arts. I eliminated one of these articles for you in terms of expanding our program. He's exceptional, and the theater team that's here is as well. So we'll turn it over to Mr. Reynolds. Sir.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson and board. I'm very excited to talk about music, theater, and visual arts because it is the month that we celebrate that. And today, I thought I'd do a little different. And each of your tables, you have some celebrations that I'd like to point you towards. We do amazing things in the classroom every day, but these are students that are going above and beyond and doing exceptional things. And I know Mrs. Wallace and Dr. Anderson, thank you for recognizing my award. I will say that Katie Murphy, who's joining us tonight, was selected as the Teacher of the Year for Kansas Educational Theater Association. And we have amazing things going on. I will tell you that this is up until this point. We haven't hit our music festival season yet, which is up around the corner in April, but there's just some awesome things. If you have the time tonight, please check out some of our visual arts from around the district. We have music played for you guys quite a few times. But tonight, we have student thespians that are going to come up and talk about why theater is important to them. So I'm going to turn that over to Ms. Murphy and the students from Topeka High, Topeka West, and Highland Park. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Emma Culbertson, and I am from Topeka High. Oh, yes, I'm short, thank you. I'll let everyone else introduce themselves.
Hi, my name is Phoebe Edgerton-Ku Fall. I'm from Topeka West High School.
Hi, I'm Kobe Hall. I am a junior at Highland Park High School.
We're excited to be here and be able to be presented the opportunity to bring awareness to theater in our schools' month, which is the month of March, and be able to advocate for the arts. This year, Topeka High had the wonderful and unique opportunity of being able to bring their production of Hades Town to state this year, which is over at the Kansas Thespian Festival in Wichita. It was back in January. We were able to bring our entire company to put on our production in front of almost seventeen hundred audience members. And our troop was not only able to share our talents while we were there, but we were also able to share our beliefs in supporting DEIA and showing other troops how they can break barriers, like Topeka High did. We were the first TPS 501 school to go to state, as well as the first Title I school to go to state. And alongside being able to perform on the main stage, we were able to host a workshop where we were able to talk to other troops about how to incorporate unity and be able to just make a safe space for students and their troops. And we also had five students who were able to move on into the International Thespian Festival, which will be in, over the summer, in Indiana.
At Topeka West this year, we were really, really proud to have ten students qualified to compete at that international festival like we talked about, which is fantastic because ten students is the most we've ever had in our school's history. Additionally, at the festival, senior Richard Johnson, who couldn't join us tonight, was awarded the Future Theater Educator Scholarship. And like we said, Ms. Murphy back there, was awarded Teacher of the Year in our region. Like Emma said, this month is theater in our schools' month. And on March 6th, we were given the fantastic opportunity to spend the day at the Capitol, which allowed us to continue our now nine-year-long tradition of Advocacy Day. Advocacy Day is partially student-run and student-organized by the Advocacy Day Steering Committee, of which both Emma and I are a part. On Advocacy Day, we had twenty-five schools able to attend. We were recognized on the House floor. We got to sing in the Capitol Rotunda together, and we were able to speak to our individual representatives to further advocate for the importance of theater education. Currently at Topeka West, we have, we have just closed our school musical, Little Shop of Horrors, yay! And right now, we have two shows in rehearsal, our mainstage spring play, Lend Me a Soprano, which is also directed by Ms. Murphy, and our senior-directed play, Property Rights, which I am directing.
Hard to follow that up. Anyway. Theater at HP has grown a lot recently. We're proud to have, like, a record number of students coming onto shows this year. I'm really excited about that personally. Our fall show, Bear Wolf in the Bard, saw more patrons than last year, and And we plan to have our first showing of our spring show in our School's Spirit Week, which I'm really excited about. I'm looking forward to that a lot. Our spring show is going to be Murder at the Ballet. It's a murder mystery kind of thing. I will also be playing a part in it, as I did in Bear Wolf in the Bard. Please come check it out. It'll be awesome. At the end of our semester, we're gonna be reactivating our troupe after a fairly long hiatus. We, we will be having our thespian induction at the end of the semester. So it's gonna be awesome. We're excited to see even more support through our theater program. And we're even more excited to make these productions possible. Thank you for your time.
We have a question or two.
Yeah.
And we're gonna ask our Teacher of the Year to come one up. You might have a question for her. And it's so perfect with it being Women's History Month to acknowledge and highlight our Teacher of the Year in addition to our students.
Are there questions from the board? Yes, Mr. Munoz.
First of all, I was recently at the Frozen, were any of you involved with the Frozen production?
Yes, I forgot to mention our shows. But yes, we just finished Frozen Junior. And we are now working on our final show, which is Funny Money, which will be in next month.
I thought it was awesome. It was high school students, but also elementary school students. It was, it was a combination, which is amazing. So my goal is, since I've been to one, now I need to go to Topeka West and Highland Park. So I'm gonna put that on my, my list. How did you all get involved with theater and what does it do for you all?
So I got involved, I got involved with theater this year, actually. I'd been interested in theater in general throughout my entire high school career so far, but I just never really took the time out to actually commit to it. But me and a group of friends were like, you know, we should do this. We're all very interested. We might as well commit to it. So we ended up going. I actually skipped rehearsals because I was doubting myself that maybe I won't do this. Maybe I won't like it. So I ended up not going, but I changed my mind later, came back. And our lovely director, Ms. McCormick, was very gracious with me in that regard. Still gave me a role and it was, it was really awesome. I'm very proud that I did it and I look forward to doing it again next year.
Technically, I started doing theater in preschool. If anybody saw our production of The Gingerbread Man, I was the little old lady that chased him, if anybody remembers. But I remember actually making the conscious decision to join theater when I was about nine years old and I moved here from Wichita. And I started doing summer theater camps through Helen Hawker Theater. I moved around so much when I was younger, just a lot of job changes and family situation changes. And I remember theater being the first time that I had something of permanence in my life. It's given me a lot of lifelong friends. And also it's just, it's taught me that I can grow at any time in my life. I don't have to be perfect at any time in my life. And it's really given me a lot of lessons similar to that.
I started doing theater in middle school. But middle school theater compared to high school theater is really, you really can't compare the two. But I've really thrived in high school theater. I've done so many productions there, as well as just being on the leadership team for three years. And yeah, I've just definitely grown as a person with all the different opportunities that theater has granted me.
Well, congratulations to you all and I look forward to seeing more of you all in productions. Ms. Murphy, anything you want to share with us?
Phoebe was my camper when I was doing Hawker Camp. So I've known her since she was nine and had purple hair. But all of those things that the kids have said are true. Theater really does give kids a home. It gives them a voice. It teaches them that their opinions matter. And, and I speak for myself as well. So I'm really happy to hear that they have had these experiences in high school.
Dr. Beeson.
I had just a couple of comments. First, all four of you are so impressive. And I know you're thespians, so I shouldn't be maybe surprised at how eloquent you all are, but really beautiful speakers and impressive to have you all here. I think it's sort of a universal truth that theater is often sort of the safest space in any school. That was, I was not a theater kid, too scared to be probably. But I remember that about theater, knowing that that was the most accepting place. And I, I think that holds true today. And I'm so glad to hear your descriptions of that and that you found that to be, to be true. I also wanted to commend you on sort of your activism through theater. The mention of sharing, prioritizing DEIA, that you are coordinating an advocacy day at the Capitol. I was, I was there and remember that day. And I think that that's gotta be very rewarding and empowering. And I hope that you can continue to take that into your future. So congratulations to all of you and thank you for being here.
Dr. Bumbry.
Jackson, have you ever been in the theater? I kind of. I kind of suspected that. But I wonder, is the Topeka High Little Theater in any verge of becoming a thing? I mean, because that would open up more opportunities.
The person that can answer that question is conveniently right here.
Yes, we're currently working on improving the, what used to be the Lower Shop into the Martha Harret Black Box Theater so that we can offer more performance opportunities for students across the district and the school, including those in music and choral singing. So that's the hope. That's, that's why we did Frozen Junior, so that we can be more inclusive and start passing down the love and safe space of theater to the next generation. And that's what these lovely young people are doing now, is creating a space where they can offer that to the next generation and they're leading by example. And we're very thankful for them to take some of that ownership and some of that work off of our very full plates. So I'm Ms. Burr and I'm the Technical Director at Topeka High School.
When will it be available?
That's a great question. We're, things are still, still, we're, it's, it's cleared out. It's open, ready for construction. We're waiting on, we're waiting on the next paperwork to come through our way. So it's, it's very much still happening. It's just, things are slow sometimes and we're accepting that and moving forward. Baby steps are sometimes the safest place to go, so.
Anything else? I'll just say, I will make a comment real quick. Ms. Burr has to deal with one of my children a lot of the time. And, and I appreciate Ms. Burr, Mr. Jensen. My oldest, who has helped a lot behind the scenes, but made his stage, well, big stage debut in Frozen Junior over this last weekend, has, and I think everybody touched on it, and I think it's important for you guys to know how supportive we are as a board because you hear a lot less about acceptance and a lot less about diversity and equity and inclusion. And that is something that's still very important. And forever, the theater has been that place. And so I try to say it every time I talk to thespians. And, and we very much appreciate that. So, thank you.
Taking a five-minute break momentarily. So instead of reading the proclamation, you wore the proclamation. You're far better than reading a piece of paper. So again, thank you so much. And if you hang around for five minutes, we'll be taking a break momentarily. We have our social workers here with us. I saw Ms. Mills and I, and at first I thought Highland Park was here probably as well to be rooting Kobe along. And Ms. Franklin is here. So here are social workers. Come up for Social Worker Month. Now, there is a video, but they are the video. They are far better than any video that you can watch. And so, and we'll end with the Read Across America video. We also know, I think Ms. Farrelly was here, yeah? And our, and part of that is, I know you have a social work degree. And so she's with Parents as Teachers. Oh, you're promoting Roll and Read. Okay, I'll come back for Read Across America. Although you do also have a social work degree. I'm gonna turn it on over to our social workers. Ms. Mills and team will introduce who they are, and Ms. Franklin. And, and as they do that, and Mr. Willer, of course, they are gonna open up for questions in terms of what they do. And then she'll share a little bit about how many social workers we have in the district.
Good. Hi, I'm Susan Mills and I do coordination of social work in the district. It's quite an honor. And having wonderful opportunities to see social workers in action in all the buildings, teaching, teachers, teaching as well. It's just amazing the work that's happening in the district. And thank you for letting me join you today.
I'm Regina Franklin, the McKenna Dental Coordinator for the district and also honored to be able to serve our families. And thank you for inviting me.
I'm Fred Willer. I'm a social worker at Highland Park High School. This is my 24th and last year at Highland Park. And it's been a gift every single year I've worked at Highland Park.
Are there questions or comments from the board? Dr. Beeson.
I would just say that my mom was a longtime school social worker. And as a former teacher, I relied a lot on school social workers as well. Much like teachers, you all are not paid enough for the very important jobs you do. You don't get enough acknowledgement. And I just want to say that what you do is so, so important, not only, you know, on an individual basis or a school basis, but in the whole community. The way that you coordinate resources and take care of our kids and our staff is, is really important and I commend that. So thank you so much for your service.
I didn't realize it was Mr. Willer's last year. So if there are no other questions, we might show that video after all for the school social work video.
Yeah.
I'll turn it back over to questions. If there are questions.
Questions or comments?
All right, we're gonna go ahead and roll the social work video as well.
How to meet kids. Daily life of the social worker is problem solving all day long. It's really figuring out how to meet kids where they're at and families where they're at and figure out innovative ways and creative ways to support them so that we can all have a good day at school.
It's hard to define normal because no day is ever the same. Sometimes it's checking in with students who I've recognized through car line are just having a rough day and a rough start. Responding to crisis and care calls for students who are having just a difficult time in the classroom.
There's something really special, I think, about being in a school and the way that you're able to connect with students that you don't really get from other settings. You connect with teachers, you connect with counselors, the principal. We all just build this little community here. There's something really gratifying about that.
Just in our changing world, I think it's never been more important to have social emotional support in schools. I think it's important to be able to meet that child where they're at. You know, as you work with children, hopefully they're growing in their emotional intelligence.
I think one of the amazing things about school social work is that you really can taper it according to what is happening in the community, what's happening in society. While we can't be everyone's missing piece of the puzzle, we are all part of the puzzle in eliminating barriers and helping things to get better.
I would say to love the kids like they're your own kids. I think that sometimes we are the adult that they need and they need to feel loved and by somebody here. Just love these kids like they're your own.
Love these kids like they're your own. That's probably the best way that some of the social workers do. They are so humble in their presentation, just so that you know. If you all can stand for just one more moment as we get ready to acknowledge you with an applause. Ms. Franklin, when she came, we had six hundred homeless students. We now have somewhere between three hundred, two hundred and three hundred homeless students under her leadership. And she is the community sector leader, board member on many boards as it relates to the homeless work in this area and region. Yes, sir.
I had a question. I know there was an effort at All Hands on Deck. Is that right? That's trying to work it out. Are we involved with that or are you in that sort of conversation and work?
Yes, I just, I received an invite this week to represent the district at that. And I'm starting on the 24th, I believe. I sent it to Dr. Anderson. And she's fully supportive. So yes, I will be participating in that.
That sounds good. Well, I, when I come across some families and when the issue of homelessness and 501, your name comes up often. So I hear a lot of great things. I just wanted to let you know that you're very highly spoken of and I appreciate all of your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
So she is the filter that any homeless student, anywhere in any county that's even bordering ours, if there's a homeless family, they contact. That's part of what Impact Avenue does, which she leads that piece for us on this end. They contact her and you could be in another district. But if you're homeless and you're here in Topeka, she will ensure to pair you up with Impact Avenue and get you housed. So it's incredible. Ms. Mills, of course, oversees the social workers along with Ms. Franklin. And Ms. Mills really is kind of the key, main designee for social workers. She has a soft voice, but a powerful way about herself in how she leads the student teachers. So almost every student teacher in this area and region, they train under Mrs. Mills, who was a social worker at Williams when I started. And she is extraordinary. And then, of course, Mr. Willer needs no introduction. Because of him, we actually have the cupboard down at Quentin Heights. I came to one meeting once and he said, where can we have a cupboard? And lo and behold, a little bit more fussing later and there the cupboard opened. And so he gives out the awards. He works with the individuals that give with the shoes. And everyone in Topeka Public Schools knows his name. He is just an extraordinary person. So can we give them another applause and thank them? Roll and Read, come on up. All right. For our media, our administrator oversees Media Services and Ms. Farrelly, come on up.
Just have to bring a friend. So shout out to Ms. Franklin because I've never met Ms. Franklin, but we have emailed frequently. She's a very strong advocate. And anytime she needs digital resources for families, she knows who to reach out to. So I'm not sure if we're gonna show our highlighted video. But once again, I'm Tiffany St. Clair, the Coordinator of Library Media Services. And it's a privilege to be here with you this evening. I want to reiterate some of the events that we do for Read Across America Week, as well as all of our efforts to celebrate literacy throughout the year. So we host book fairs, monthly reading challenges through our Reading Challenge app Beanstack. We host readings, guest readers, mystery readers, literacy nights, book clubs, author visits, spirit weeks. Jardine had a spirit week. Our staff also write and receive literacy grants through the Topeka Public Schools Foundation, Donors Choose, Little Free Library, and countless other organizations. And we also promote literacy through our continued partnership with the Topeka and Shawnee County Public Library. And I also want to extend gratitude to all of our past and present board members who come and read to our students during Read Across America Week because we know that when we model that behavior with our students, it has a profound impact on their level of engagement with reading and really serves as an excellent model for them through their literacy journey. I also brought a friend. So we have been doing some work at Parents as Teachers to kind of update their library. And when I knew I would be here this evening, I thought, what an excellent opportunity to have Ms. Farrelly come and promote a growing literacy tradition in Topeka Public Schools. I think we're in our fourth year, fourth year for Roll and Read. So just wanted to give her a second to promote.
Yes, and thank you for allowing me to be here this evening. Yeah, Roll and Read, we're now in our fourth year and several of you have participated. We so much appreciate those of you who have been able to join us to have a part in really engaging families in that experience of being able to, to enjoy reading and to hear different voices in that experience. So this year, what's, what's really nice is that we are gonna be able to host a few local authors and a local illustrator who will be able to read the book that she illustrated and really just have a lot more support in engaging families in our community because we know that literacy is such a huge piece in early childhood and all through education. And so we just appreciate this opportunity to really show families how fun that could be. And then also combine that, that physical fitness of walking around and, and engaging in some different things. So I appreciate Ms. St. Clair inviting me just to give you all a reminder about that. And it ties in so well. It will also be around the week of the young child. So we'll be able to separate, celebrate that.
And we will have Gerald and Piggy, so if you've ever read the Mo Willens books, I may or may not be there dressed up as one of the characters, so.
So we'll end with that video unless there's a question for our two staff members. All right, so Roll and Read and the highlight video, this will be the last video for this evening.
Bring Across America is a vital celebration that promotes the lifelong love of reading. In our school buildings, our efforts to promote literacy are visible throughout all of our schools, and especially in our school libraries. We're in a unique position to contribute to this work in the sense that we provide students with access to diverse stories that really recognize their lived experiences as well as the world around them. So we engage students in reading challenges every month. They log their minutes read as well as their books read. So from the time we started school in August to now, our students and our staff combined logged a total of 1.5 million minutes read. For a district of our size, 2 million minute goal is pretty common, and we're well on our way to achieving that goal. When we make time for reading, when we talk about reading and promote reading, and when we model that behavior ourselves, we can see that students are really engaged in that process.
Thank you, Ms. St. Clair and Ms. Fairley, for all that you do for scholars. With that, we're going to take a few minutes of a break, and we'll start with our Senior of the Month to take photos. All right, and as we're finishing up with our photos and people are taking their seats, we do want to mention the artwork. Mr. Reynolds?
So the artwork today on display is from all of the high schools. We have Highland Park, Topeka West, Topeka High, and Cap City. And then we have a representation from middle school, from Jardine Middle School, and then Quincy, our signature art school. So we've got from elementary all through high school, and some of them are award winners. We do have some of our Living the Dream winners and some of our Scholastic Art Award winners on display tonight.
Thank you so much. The one proclamation we didn't read, but you'll be acknowledging, is also, of course, it is Women's History Month. I'll turn it back on over to the board.
Okay, so our next item is public communications. If we have comments?
We have none.
Okay, so we'll move to business by consent, and I will look for a motion.
I move the board approve the items of business by consent as presented and authorize the board president or superintendent to sign the special project and purchasing contracts for and on behalf of the board.
Is there a second? Mr. Tatum? Thank you. And discussion or questions? Yes, Dr. Beeson?
I have a question about item 17.2, and it is the termination of the Reform Grant. And I am curious if we could get some background on that grant and what it was for, and how and why it was terminated?
So, yes, the Reform Grant was a partnership grant with Kansas State University to recruit staff, paraprofessionals, and high school juniors and seniors into the teaching profession. So the grant for us paid a part of a salary for someone to help do that recruitment. And so we were in our second year of that grant, and we had received funds for this year already. So it is just terminated after the second year, and it was a five-year grant.
And have there been additional, or do we expect termination of additional grants considering the climate right now?
So, yes, we had a termination of a second grant yesterday with the elimination of the Office of English Learners. We lost the SAMEA grant, which was used to fund our Gomez and Gomez training for our dual-language schools. It was funding our SEAL of Bili literacy tests for our world language students, our dual-language students, and our first language students, as well as the coursework for cohorts of students. We had two current cohorts. We've had several come through, but staff, it was paying their tuition to get their EL endorsement, and so those funds are terminated.
Were those, was that a continuous grant as well that?
Yes, we've actually had that grant for, I believe, the last four years, and it was for at least two more years.
Okay. Thank you.
Other, yes, Mr. Munoz?
You make me curious. So can you help me understand, and all of us, the impact on students and maybe also on staff and in the district with the loss of these funds?
Yes, so the impact of the Reform Grant termination is that, you know, we don't have necessarily the resources. We will still recruit students, and we will still move students into the teaching profession, but it eliminates some of the supports to be able to do that. And K-State is able to continue some of the coursework that they had already outlined for online programming for that. As it relates to the SAMEA grant, it will, it will have, we get funding for every teacher who has an EL endorsement. So the more teachers we had put through that cohort process where they're getting 100% of their tuition paid and getting an EL endorsement, it also supported our teachers moving over on the salary scale. And so those opportunities are lost for our staff, as well as the professional development around Gomez and Gomez for our three dual-language schools, and also our EL department used those funds to provide professional development, to send staff to conferences. And then we have, I don't know, quadrupled a lot. We have been given the SEAL of Bili literacy assessment to significantly more students in the last two years, and that grant is funding those. So we, we will work to find ways to continue to provide those assessments, but it will be at our cost.
Back to Dr. Beeson.
No.
So to confirm, this was federal grant funding that has been eliminated?
Correct.
Arguments are made regarding the U.S. Department of Education, that such a small amount of school funding is federal. And I do just want to point out that districts like Topeka Public Schools especially, and I can go into this in my comment period, but really rely on federal funding, and this is going to have an, an impact on our students and our teachers, and I think it is a real shame. So thank you very much for the information.
Other discussion on the motion and the second? If not, we can move to a vote?
Who seconded?
Mr. Tatum did.
That's right. He's not on the list. Vote by hand. Thank you. I'll just put Dr. Beeson down so we can open the vote. It's open. All votes are in, and the motion carries unanimous.
Great. Back to Dr. Anderson for our superintendent's report.
Fortunate to have Mr. Jim Edwards here today. Mr. Edwards is going to come on up and give us a legislative update on the heels of that, the questions that were asked. That's quite timely. Every year, Mr. Edwards, our lobbyist, comes, and he gives us a report of his activity, but most importantly, what's happening outside of Topeka Public Schools impacting Topeka Public Schools. Mr. Edwards, thank you for being here, sir.
Thank you. Good evening. Any of you remember Alfred Hitchcock? I somewhat felt like that this evening in the first part of the board meeting as I was sitting here. I sat through a meeting this afternoon down to State House, dealing with the bill placing certain restrictions and governing actions on school boards. And their discussion wasn't anything like what I was seeing here tonight. I mean, you had, it's an open meeting, I mean, and you had students here. Anyway, it was just such a divergence from what, what I experienced this afternoon. But this evening, I want to take a little bit of time to, because I know most of you are probably going to have more questions than anything else, but just to start off with, what was so bad in your life last year that you needed about 750 bills to deal with? Because that's how many have been introduced so far in this legislative session. 10 of the House, 400 in the House, 270 in the Senate. 10 have been, 10 House bills have actually been killed. Zero Senate bills have been killed. 10 House bills have passed the Senate, and 18 Senate bills have passed the House. So those are moving towards the governor. This evening, though, I want to talk about problems facing the legislature, the tenor of the legislature, bills crucial to USD 501, and then finally, what can be done on those issues. Problems facing the legislature really come in two areas. First one is their session timeline. They eliminated about three weeks of work this year, and they're required to have 90 session days. Unfortunately, though, 90 days includes weekends now, which are pro forma days for the legislature. Pro forma means that there's no action, no issues discussed, but they count weekends as those 90 days. So you started a week later than we did last year, and you'll land about two weeks sooner than this year, or than last year. The second one is their new budgeting process. The new budgeting process, they started working on the budget before session started, and they will finish, well, the, the 2007, 2007 is the House bill that they're working right now with the budget, and that just had hearings in Senate Ways and Means this morning. I'll talk a little bit about that later. But in the past, legislature always really started working earnest on the budget about the middle of April, and that somewhat coincides with the date, April 15th, some of you might recognize that date for some reason. Unfortunately, this year's legislature will end the veto session four days before the led, before the consensus revenue estimating group will meet. That group always meets as close to the day after tax day as they can to have, and they aren't going to have, nobody's going to, not everybody's going to file their taxes before the 15th, but they're going to have a pretty good idea of what revenue they're going to have to work with. Unfortunately, they're going to, they're going to end the veto session four days before that consensus revenue estimating group meets. You know, some legislators say, well, why don't we just change when the legislative revenue estimating group meets? Well, that might work if, if IRS wants to change the dates for when the federal tax date or when tax filings are. So those two, those two items are ones that have really developed, I'll call it, the tenor of the session. And the tenor of the session can basically be said it's been nasty. And it's nasty because of the timelines that are being placed. Committee chairs are getting tired of forcing things early, using a different budget process where the budget committee is meeting and really has no idea of what revenues are going to be. And so that's, that's caused some questionable actions in the scheduling of committees, the committee meetings themselves, and that's poured over into the public at large, the public that attends those committee hearings. Mr. Munoz attended a session last week that, or two weeks ago, that was really an example of that, and that was, that was one dealing with the, the issue of DACA students and providing in-state tuition for undocumented students. Bill was passed in 2004 originally, and has just came back up for, primarily because the Attorney General is, is pressing that issue. So you have, you have hearings that normally would have been scheduled over, in the past, over a two-year, I mean, two-day period, where you had enough conferees that you didn't, if, and that's amazing part, is they talked about how school boards today, I mean, the meeting I was at, where school boards might not want to hear from people. Well, it's kind of like do as I say, not as I do, because they, they have not provided those hearings for people. And they'll schedule committee hearings where you have maybe 24 hours advance notice, yet you have to have testimony in 48 hours in advance, and I've not figured out how to, how to deal with that in a time matter. But anyway, that's, that's the tenor. The tenor is, is worse than I've ever seen in the 35 years that I've been over at the State House, and I don't think it's going to get better. Next year's going to be worse, because we're going to, they're going to come back and start working on a budget earlier, like they did this year, but they're going to, if, if things happen on the federal level where some funding is lost, and I'll talk a little bit about that later, they're going to, it's going to be a world hurt. So anyway, special ed, an issue that is near and dear to heart of this, of this district, as well as a lot of urban districts around the state. Last year, as you remember, the governor and the legislature agreed about $72.5 million additional funds going into special ed. Now, it's going to be a four-year program, about 70- Now, it's going to be a four-year program, about 72, 65, 72 million dollars a year, to where they would get to where they are actually funding the 92% of excess costs that they say that they should fund. That 75 or 70, 72, 72 million last year would have brought them up to somewhere around 73, 74% of excess costs. So they're still quite short. K through 12 budget committees started off this year by saying, well, things are tight, so we're going to put in 60 million. And they pass that on to House Appropriations, and House Appropriations, their initial action lowered it to 30 million. And when it came out of committee, it came out of committee at 10 million. Went over to the Senate, and they immediately lopped it off to zero. There was a hearing today in Senate Ways and Means where they, there was a motion to add another 10 million back, failed. So, and with the new rules that they have as far as they call pay and go, if you want to cut some, or if you want to add something to the budget, you have to actually provide where you're going to cut that from. So floor actions, we really can't do that. So it's got to be a conference committee where the possibility of adding some funds back in. But it's still going to be short. And there's not a realization that when special ed funds or when excess costs are not covered by the state, as they should be, that it ends up coming back to local districts and you either have to short general ed funding or you have to look at property tax increases. And those aren't really loved too much around the state right now. Second issue is teacher recruitment and retention. There were two bills that were introduced towards the beginning of the session that would move teachers from tier three to tier two, those that were in tier three. Tier three is essentially a defined contribution plan, where tier two is a defined benefit plan, pension plan. Both of those bills received hearings. Both of them have sat there. And they probably will sit there. That's a tough one. And I'll tell you, right, for Shawnee County legislators, that's a tough one because not only does it only cover teachers, and there's many in the district that have positions other than certified teachers, but Shawnee County legislators also have a large number of state employees in their districts. And so that's a tough one. Latest bill that just came out was introduced last week. It's called CRISP, which stands for, let's see if I've got it in there, Kansas Retirement Investment and Savings Plan, essentially is a 401K plan. Doesn't look very attractive at all. So the issue of having that be an attractive piece for educators, for teachers in retention as well as recruitment is probably not going to happen this year. And I say that, and I remember back to last year, one of the last bills that, well, when they came back for special session, deal with tax bill, that was, that was a key issue, was moving teachers from tier three to tier two. It did not go anywhere, though. Our final one, vouchers, scholarships, tax incentive plans, tax educational savings accounts, whatever you want to call them. Their vouchers have such a negative connotation in legislative bodies, not only in Kansas but around the country, that you have to come up with other, with other words to describe it. And essentially, they all do the same thing, though. They take money away from, and this isn't directly from K through 12 education, public schools, but it takes it away from the state general fund. And once you do that, we're part of, or a large part of the state general fund. So not a lot of good news on that one either. And I don't have to remind you, private schools don't have to be accredited. They don't have to, they aren't accountable to the state. So in many cases, it's just we're giving money to schools that might not really need it. And that's been one of the points that's been made in all of the hearings. But it's, yes. Or you educate this, yes, you educate those students. No, a lot of things don't make sense. Other issues, and one of them I mentioned starting off was board restrictions, governance mandates. And there have been some good comments. And when I say that, it's not the committees, the committee members as a whole, but there are a number of them on the committees that just, as I said, this is do as I say, not as we do, which is sad. But that's flavor. Restricting immigrant students, it's another one that's come up. It comes up, it's on general orders. And you talked about federal issues. And last week or a couple of weeks ago, I was given some figures from Mr. Minky that, for Topeka, this is USD 501, 306 total staff with full or partial salaries for federal dollars. That's 15% of 501 total workforce. 14.5 million dollars for salaries for those individuals I mentioned. 54 number of special ed, 54 special education teachers paid from titled B1B. One teacher Indian education program individual. 42 Sheldon Harts, Sheldon Head Start staff paid from HHS grant. And let's see, 83 staff paid from title program dollars. 11 pre-K staff paid from TANF dollars. Two paid from, two staff from federal infectious disease grant dollars. And 113 child nutrition staff paid from USDA dollars. So, and that's where, if we think we're going to have problems with the budgeting process that we have now in Kansas, that's been in student Kansas, this is going to become even worse. And I think that's one thing that some legislators are probably worried, some are worried about it more than others. But it can throw a real monkey wrench in, in funding and also the budgeting process next year. We do have some cash balances, but those can go quite rapidly. So with that, I don't want to take a lot of your time, but what questions do you have? It's, unfortunately, was not a lot of good news. Yes?
Dr. Boenbrink.
Thank you, Mr. President. Has there been any work done on the capers penalty for a retired teacher who comes back that they suffer their capers dollars?
That bill didn't even get a hearing.
Great. Makes perfect sense. I mean, that would be real easy to do. And would help ease the teacher shortage, which we're going to have when all these negatives come. I had a friend who ran for, and was elected to the legislature about 20 years ago. He only ran once because he couldn't stand the low IQ of the legislature. Nothing made sense. Like, you have to have your input in 48 hours before the discussion in front of the committee, but the committee only gives 24 hours notice. Makes perfect sense.
We, thanks for leading into this. We have, we have a newly created committee called GOGE. Here in Kansas, it follows the DOGE committee back in DC. But it's, I'm COGE, Committee on Governmental Efficiency. And I attended their meeting today. And in doing so, I was going to submit some testimony, and I didn't get that done because not only do you have to have it in 48 hours in advance, but you have to provide them, and this is, if you do written testimony and not oral testimony, you have to give them a PDF file, which is fine. I mean, that's what we do on most testimonies that are provided anyway. But in addition, you have to give them six hard copies, which I asked somebody, well, what if you have somebody out in Goodland, Kansas that wants to present testimony? And you tell them, okay, well, we have to have PDF of your testimony, fine. But you also have to give us six hard copies of your testimony. I don't know whether it's efficiency for that committee or whether it's efficiency for the state. I think it's the first. So, no, it doesn't make sense. And, but not a lot of things have this year.
Mr. Tatum?
Good evening, Mr. Edwards.
Hello.
You know, I shouted out your contributions last board meeting. You weren't here. So I'll say again how much your work is greatly appreciated. And not only you, but also Dr. Gray, who's very instrumental in this process. And you both working together helped to keep us informed on the issues that are happening at the State House that we really need to know about. So I know it feels like a grind from day to day right now, but just know that you, your efforts are greatly appreciated. 450 bills, is that what you said?
475.
475.
Yes. And that's, that's not out of the, no, that's, there's 770. 400 total for the, 400 in the House, 270 in the Senate.
Okay. So I spent a lot of years tracking legislative activity in previous roles that I've had. To the best of my knowledge, that is a highly inflated number. That is not, that is a greater number than what we would normally see during a typical legislative session. Is that right?
Correct. And normally, and I'll count two years as being a session, the two-year period. Normally, you have 1,000 bills during that two-year period. And we were already three quarters away there.
That's right. It just, in the one, yeah, in the one. So because this is a two-year period, the bills that don't get passed and are still in a committee will remain alive next legislative session to be worked on or developed in some additional way, correct?
Unless they're expressly killed.
Unless they're, right.
Yes, they can sit there, and even though they haven't been blessed, they can always pull them out next year by some action.
That's right. Okay, all right. So I'm struggling to really kind of understand how you can possibly keep track of the action of all these bills, the hundreds and hundreds of bills. But what, what are we, what are we looking at in terms of what is likely to occur by the close of the legislative session? If you could sum it up for us and paint a picture of what you believe, based on your experience and the landscape that you're viewing now, what are, what are the things that we might expect to see happening very soon?
Education-related, I would say you're looking at, I truly believe we can still get something for special ed, but it's going to be small. It's not going to be the, up in the range that we had last year. And it really, I mean, until the legislature realizes that when they don't take action and local boards have to take action, it goes to property taxes. And there's not a real clear understanding, and again, Senate Ways and Means, I sat in today, was talking about, a couple legislators were talking about, well, this school's got $282 million last year or this year. Well, that's because of the CPI increase in school funding. And so it's, it's, there's not a linkage there to where people say, well, CPI basically is because you have inflation. And so to say that you've got 200, districts have $282 million of new money, it's covering those increases, inflationary increases. So I wish I could say there'd be more for special ed. I think that's, that's going to be at least one thing we can, we can go after. The issue of teacher retention with the addition of moving teachers from tier three to tier two. I can't see that happening for various reasons. And one of them being that to really do it right, it needs to include a larger group. And if the legislature had truly funded capers as they were required to do, you miss a couple $400 million payments into a retirement plan. And all of a sudden, I mean, that drastically affects your, your targets that you have and what you're not making. So I don't know if that helps.
It does. So the thing that I'm concerned about, not the only, I mean, there's a lot of things to be concerned about here. But one of the things that I'm concerned about is the issue about board restrictions, things that the Attorney General seems to want to impose upon local school boards. Can you say more about that and what might be going on with that bill?
I think it's driven more by, and the Attorney General definitely is in on it, but I think it's driven more by the Kansas Policy Institute. And they're trying to, they're trying to set up a, an organization that would compete with the Kansas Association of School Boards. And so there, some of the actions they're taking would do this. But legislate, no legislative committee would allow any one individual sitting in on that committee to come in when you start a meeting and say, by the way, I'd like to add this to our agenda for the day. Well, that was one of the things that was included, and a small one maybe, but in some cases, it might be larger, where one school board member could come in and say, I want to add this to the agenda. Well, if you have all seven, say, well, yeah, I want this and I want that. You can imagine what your meetings would be like. So, and somebody pointed that out to them. They said, well, why, you know, maybe we ought to institute that for ourselves. Well, that doesn't go very well. So it's, a lot of, a lot of the bills that are affecting education, education governance are KPI bills. And for those of you that aren't familiar, KPI, Kansas Policy Institute, is basically a Koch offshoot.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anybody else? Okay.
Before I finish, I would like to thank Dr. Gray personally. We basically communicate a lot online. But that is a key part of any grassroots program, is the, is the backroom efforts. And I really do appreciate, I mean, I get things to them and they're sent out immediately. And that's the other key part for grassroots efforts. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. And as we, as you've listened to fiscal responsibility and all that you do, sir, and the time that you're spending, we so appreciate you. We're going to ask our auditor to come up with, to continue this conversation about finance. My apologies are extended. Normally, under strategic plan goal one, I'd have a lobbyist and student achievement all lumped in that space. But having gone over the legislative updates in our lobbyist presentation, if there are no other questions for Mr. Edwards, then we're going to transition from Mr. Edwards. And we'll be bringing him back again in a, in a few months to share how the session ended. And we're going to ask for Mr. Bucy with our auditor, just going to come on up. And they will be presenting on the audit for this year.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. I'll be brief. I just wanted to let you know, I set packets in front of each of you. The larger binder is our audited financial statements and our single audit covering our federal grant expenditures. And then the smaller bound document is just for you. And that's what will be discussed this evening. So with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Kayla Williams. She is a principal with BT and Co., our external auditor.
Hello, everybody. My name is Kayla Williams. I'm with BT and Co. I've been doing the Topeka Public Schools audit for about 10 years now. So I'm getting pretty familiar with Gary and the rest of the team. So as Matt had mentioned, that smaller packet is the one I'm going to be mostly going over with you today. The larger financial statement packet, it has all the details of your financials. Feel free to look over that. And if you have questions about that specifically, you might reach out to Gary and Matt first and then me if they, if they can answer those. So on that, the letter to the board, on that first page there, this is where we address "This is where we address our responsibility to perform an audit in accordance with specific accounting standards. Those standards require us to perform procedures to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are free from material misstatement. Our procedures include examining on a test basis the evidence supporting the amounts and disclosures that are in your financial statements. We also assess the accounting principles used in the significant estimates made by management as well as evaluate the overall financial statement presentation. In the section titled Accounting Policies and Practices, first, we would bring to your attention anything identified related to significant alternative accounting policies and practices. There is nothing in this area that we need to bring to your attention. However, in the next section, I do want to point something out to you. We explained that there was a new accounting policy that was adopted by the district in the current year. In addition, the business-type funds were reevaluated and analyzed and determined to be, instead, governmental-type funds. And so with the impact of the two things, the new GASB-100 standard and this reevaluation of the funds, we do have a change in reporting entity that is presented consistent with the requirements of GASB-100. This is a significant change in the way that the district's financial statements are presented. So I do just want to point this out to you as it will look a little bit different. And some of the things you see in the MDNA section especially will look a little different. In the rest of the section on Page Two, we would go over any policies in controversial or emerging areas or significant unusual transactions. There were no such items in the current year. As part of preparing financial statements in accordance with GAAP, management makes certain estimates. Summary information about those estimates are prepared by management and included in the attachment. These are all the same as in the prior year, so I won't go over those in a lot of detail with them. The next section explains that we did have some adjustments that we identified as part of the audit, and those are also attached to this letter. And management records those in the district's trial balance. There were various uncorrected misstatements, which are also included in an attachment. We have concluded that the uncorrected items are immaterial, both individually and in the aggregate, but we do disclose those to you. Further, on Page Two, we go on to describe what is considered to be a departure from the auditor's standard report. So because the district had this change within the reporting entity in the current year that I previously described, it is noted as an emphasis of matter paragraph in the report. And the verbiage for that paragraph is included in that letter. If you turn on to Page Three, in the Observations About the Audit Process section of the letter, we would bring to your attention any disagreements that we had with management, any consultations with other accountants, any significant issues that we discussed with management, significant difficulties encountered in performing the audit, or other difficult or contentious matters that required your attention. And there were no such matters of that type. The next section on Page Three, and continuing on to Page Five, is titled Shared Responsibilities for Independence. As your auditors, we are required by both AICPA and GAO standards to be independent, both in mind. And independence is a joint responsibility that is managed most effectively when we can all work together. So we just ask that the district inform us before entering into any relationships that might impair that independence and provide us with information so we can analyze our independence each year. Finally, at the end of this letter, we have attached a copy of management's representation letter. This letter puts into writing matters that are required by our standards to be represented to us by the district's management. We provide this letter to you to just help you better understand those representations that are made and to help you fulfill your fiduciary responsibilities. So before I open it up for questions, which you might have some, I just first want to thank Gary and Matt and the rest of the crew that we tend to bug for about four months out of the year. So we appreciate all their help working with us and getting through the process. So with that, I'll open it up if you guys do have any questions.
Any questions from the board? I don't see any.
As she has concluded, and we say this every year, Mr. Menke and teams, Mr. Bucy and others, just do an extraordinary job of ensuring that the finances are well-maintained in a way that there are no findings at the end of the year. And the whole team should be commended.
Mr. Munoz.
I just wanted to... I did have some questions beforehand, and I sent those over to Mr. Menke and to Mr. Bucy. And I just... I wanted to show my... I appreciate... Thank you for responding so quickly. And I read as much as I could, and I think I know we all did on this. And sometimes, you know, it was just a little bit above. And so I appreciate you guys' help on that. And thank you for your work, making sure that you keep them in line.
It's hard to... Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our next item, as you heard the lobbyists talk about both finance and impacts to education and instruction, Ms. Wallace will give a briefing on the accreditation update and student achievement. She's already talked a little bit about some of that with the grant adjustments and the impact, but I'll also turn it over to you and your team.
Yes, thank you. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the changes to the accreditation process. So in the past, it's been a five-year cycle. It's been an annual report that is, I think you guys have all received it, about 60 to 80 pages, pretty comprehensive. They have changed that significantly. There's no longer an outside visitation team that comes annually. Instead of those pieces, we have a much reduced report. And we have a cohort that we collaborate with over the course of the year. So in Topeka, we're part of what's the urban cohort. So we are collaborating with Wichita Public Schools, Kansas City Kansas Public Schools, and Topeka Public Schools as part of that cohort. And so part of the change is to reduce the redundancy and also give schools an opportunity to really focus in on very strategic items. So you have the PowerPoint, if you can pull that up. And on the second slide, on the far... And I think you guys have a copy of it as well. On the far-left side, it identifies four fundamentals. So those fundamentals were selected by KSDE. And every district is required to pick at least one and no more than two fundamentals to focus on each year. And so it's a one-year cycle. So we selected, as Topeka Public Schools, to focus on structured literacy. That is our work around our new resource adoption, around getting our teachers that seal of literacy license by July of 2028. And so we have a lot of energy and momentum going on that already. So it kind of made sense that we would continue to really focus in on that. We will still continue to work on standards alignment, but feel like that's a real strength for us with our curriculum design maps and our curriculum and assessment teams. Balanced literacy, we have common formative assessments, summative assessments. We have a very balanced assessment calendar. And so our second fundamental that we're focusing on is quality instruction. And that is really focused on our continued work around Dr. Hattie's high-impact strategies. And we have three strategies that we've been focused on for the last several years: academic discussion, teacher clarity, and higher-order questioning. So that's kind of an overview of the fundamentals. For each fundamental, if you move over to the brightly colored second column, you pick two structures for each fundamental, followed by a lead indicator that is a dropdown that is already selected for us. And then we create our measures of progress and goals. So at this time, I'm going to introduce you to two people who have done a lot of work with me on this, which is Mrs. Dick, our school improvement specialist. She also supervises instructional coaches. And Ms. Nettie Johnson, who is a state facilitator for accreditation. So she facilitates another cohort of schools for their collaboration around KISA.
Thank you. So the other thing that you have in front of you is this graphic organizer. So we'll have that up on the screen. So in an attempt to make sure that we have complete transparency across our district about not just accreditation but school improvement, we've created this organizer to make sure everybody, every stakeholder, knows what this means. So we start at the top with our strategic plan. And then I actually go down to the bottom with CI3T. This is our model of tiered intervention and prevention for social, emotional, academic, and behavioral supports for our students. It's what we call the plate. Everything that we do in schools every day is on that plate. So we then use school improvement processes to make sure that we have a check and balance on how things are actually working in our schools. We use data to make informed decisions. We identify strategies through visible learning research. And then we also make sure that we have support systems in place when things don't go very well. So we go across the graphic organizer, and you'll see those four fundamentals. And what we've done is we've identified a couple of different things that we have just in general here in Topeka. So you'll see that we have, like, the science of reading under structured literacy, over quality instruction, we have teacher clarity, and those other strategies that we've been working on for years. Then on the right side, we have the checks and balances through our collaboration system. We call that PLCs, or professional learning communities, where our teachers get together every day to talk about instruction and what's happening right now in our classrooms. They use that process to identify what students need additional interventions and extensions as well. So this is going to be trained in March and April with our building leadership team. So we're going to empower our principals and our teacher leaders and our instructional coaches to be able to turn around and talk about this with teachers in April. We want to make sure everybody understands that school improvement is not being done to them, accreditation is not being done to them. This is what works in schools. So we want to make sure that we own that school improvement and accreditation process, and this is kind of that starting point. And it was the perfect time when the State Department is actually refining their accreditation process. So with that, we wanted to just highlight very quickly what we're thinking about for the plan for those fundamentals. So first, we have structured literacy. And with that, our slide just has a couple of just really brief statements, but you have the draft plan as it stands right now. As we've visited stakeholder groups, we have made updates. So we will continue to make those updates based on feedback. And then after we feel like, the team feels like, we're ready to move forward, we will submit the plan for state feedback. They then have two weeks to redeliver that plan to us. We make adjustments, and then we actually move forward with what we are actually planning. So with structured literacy, we have talked about making sure that we address the tiers of intervention and support. So we want to make sure we're using our collaboration time to look at standards, to look at students, individual students by name and need. What is it that they need every single day? Do we need walk-to-intervention? Do we need to make sure that we're doing tier-one intervention in the classroom? So we have a couple of targets. So we want to make sure that we're constantly reviewing our data to make sure that we're doing what's best for kids every day. In addition, we're also working on that professional learning. It just aligned perfectly with where we're at with the adoption at elementary with Benchmark and then all of the science of reading training that we've done with letters. And then our partnership we have right now with Washburn University for the Blueprint for Literacy that will continue to help us train teachers to get that seal of literacy by July of 2028. So those are the first two functions and structures.
Good evening. The second... Sorry, the second fundamental that we discussed was quality instruction. And we really want to focus on that professional collaboration that Ms. Dick mentioned in our PLCs. There are four core questions, and you can see that they're listed there. And we really want to focus on teaching and training our teachers. So we are doing the same PLCs across the district. So that is really our goal, so we can all be making those data-driven decisions. For the next structure, we wanted to do educator evaluation. And I feel like all these things really are cohesive and tie together. To ensure that high-quality instruction, educators need those clear expectations. They need feedback, and they need the support. So our plan is to focus on training first, ensuring that every staff member can understand and can use the tools that we're going to use to observe effectively. And the next slide, please. So as Ms. Dick has mentioned, we've made great progress. Our next steps are listed there for you. We are looking for feedback. We're looking for insights from multiple groups of stakeholders. And you can see April 28th is a school improvement day of all things. So that's really our goal, to kind of start the momentum of it. So we'd love to hear your feedback or any insights you might have or questions.
So on... As your weekly update, you'll get a form that says, "Here's a reminder of the plan." And certainly, we leave this to the board if you have a comment or two you'd like to make in this space. But it also will invite feedback, because that gives you time to actually look at the plan and the documents that they've given you. And then some key questions from Ms. Wallace will be presented that you might want to answer and give feedback to. So look forward to seeing that tomorrow. We'll turn it back over to the board if there are any questions about anything that was shared tonight.
Mr. Munoz.
I did receive some feedback from an educator who seemed a little confused about letters. Could you help me understand what the process is for a teacher who needs to go through and complete that letters training? What do they need to do?
So I'll answer that. So we have multiple cohorts going right now for letters training. It is a two-year training. So there are four... Eight modules, so four in the first year and four in the second year. And it starts out... The first four modules are very much primary phonemic awareness, phonics. It's not a program. It's good instruction. And so it's training our teachers how to be good instructors of phonics and phonemic awareness. And then the second year really focuses more on multi-syllabic words and using those skills you learned at the older grade levels.
And Ms. Wallace, can you explain why we are participating in letters? I think was part of that question.
So yes, our participation is that KSDE has established a requirement that all teachers teaching in grades PK5 by July of 2028 have a seal of literacy on their license. And this is one path to getting that seal of literacy.
And so this is all online, or is this...
There are virtual sessions with an instructor, and there are some that are meeting in person. Some teachers come together and do that online piece as a group.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Other... Dr. Beeson.
Now that I'm thinking about that, when is that done? Is that done in their school day?
So we had initially three cohorts from last year who are just now finishing. And many of theirs were during the day. But we started with staff who didn't require a substitute, because that's a struggle. And so the other cohorts are either weekend or evening cohorts.
Okay. And do they get compensated?
So they are getting the $20 a half-day or $40 a full-day to participate in that training. And then as they complete modules, because there's quite a bit of work in between that they do with students, we're also... We've kind of set a certain amount of time that we will pay for them to complete that work.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Boenbry.
Was it John Hay? Who was the fellow on...
Hattie. Was it Hattie?
Hattie. Hattie, yes. He put class size and humor kind of at the end of all things important. I have spoken with teachers who had over 30 students and 15 IEPs in their class. And I'm sorry, but it is very difficult to address these things when you have that many different IEPs and that many students. Now, a private school, I haven't seen a class where they had as many as 15 students. And I would hazard a guess, I've never seen a class less than 20 at TPS. Is... Are there any? What is the average class size?
So Ms. Sharp and I just worked on staffing for next year and staffing ratios. And we do have primary classrooms that fall under 20, depending on the school that you're in.
What percent?
In preschool.
In preschool? Not... They are? Oh, that's impressive. They're not under 15?
So K1 is 18 to 1.
Okay. Well, I've been visiting the wrong classes then. Well, I frankly think if we had smaller class size, it would be easier for our instructors, our teachers, our pairs to meet these goals. Yeah. But they want to fund private schools. They want to give $8,000 vouchers, but they only want to give $5,300 to public schools. 50% less. I mean, what... If I didn't care, I'd tear it out.
I do have a question for Mrs. Dick. The other stakeholders, I know that you and Ms. Wallace presented to DCAC. Can you give us just an insight, other than us as a board, what some of the other stakeholders that you're going to?
That's a great question. Yesterday, I... Yesterday, I was able to go to our Teaching and Learning Department. So that has representatives of all content areas and fine arts. We also have special education consulting teachers that are able to attend that meeting as well. So we were able to talk about this deeply yesterday and get their feedback. Instructional coaches were able to be part of that feedback system last week. In addition, we have a couple of other groups that we're meeting with. I think superintendent's council, the principals are looking at it as well. So we're trying to go as far and wide as possible with collecting feedback from various stakeholder groups.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, I think that's it.
That concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think that's all you have, Dr. Enix.
That is all we have.
Okay, we can do board comments. I, I think we'll just skip Dr. Boenbry since he commented enough. No, Dr. Boenbry, please.
The Health and Wellness Committee met. Our health insurance is only going up seven and a half percent. It could have gone up to meet the claims versus what the insurance payments were, they'd have to go up 29%. So that doesn't make a whole lot of money for Blue Cross Blue Shield. But there's other comments about that. The Wellness Committee, we feel that if you saw your primary care physician catch things early and treat them early, we'd have fewer consequences down the road. Recent medical issues in my own family, I kind of wonder, so we had to press things on our own, but be that as it is. If you see your primary care physician, we think expenses will be less. So how are we going to inspire people to see their primary care physicians since about only 25% do? Well, Wellness Committee thought, let's charge the individuals $50 a month if they don't see their primary care physician in a year. And the policy would be, we would, you would have a year, starting July 1, to see your primary care physician. And if your policy is employee and spouse, then both of you have to see the primary care physician, or you each get a $50 charge. So we'll see how that works. I'm not sure $50 would be enough to inspire people, but just one individual, that's $600 a year. It's a fair amount of movies and pizza. But that will be our suggestion starting this summer. Then you'll have a year to comply to not be charged. Merry Christmas.
Happy New Year. Dr. Beeson.
That is essentially the update from Health Insurance Committee. Just a lot of discussion about that policy and sort of what is the, the magic number and change in premium cost in order to incentivize those physicals and primary care visits. So we'll be interested to track and see that data. Since the last meeting, Equity Council also met, and will meet again not long from now, I guess, a couple of weeks. A lot of good discussion about the purpose of Equity Council, planning for going forward, just ideas that we had. It's a especially important time that that work, I think, is focused and purposeful. So we had good discussion about that. And then really, the last thing I wanted to note is that distinguished staff awards for 2025 came out, was that yesterday? Yeah. And so, so many incredible individuals were acknowledged through those awards, and I wanted to congratulate especially Dr. Mahia, who I know we all know and get to hear from. She does incredible work for the district. We're so lucky to have her also in the community. And then my girl's teacher, Ms. Putoff, Kaylee Putoff, is a kindergarten teacher at Woodson, and two of my kids have had her, and it's her second year teaching, and she was recognized also. So congratulations to everybody.
Mr. Tatum.
All right. I, I do believe that, I have not had any committee since we met last. Policy Council was supposed to meet, but due to some conflicts with scheduling, largely on my part, we decided, we decided that, that we would just skip the meeting for February and pick back up later on this month and meet again. And that seemed to be fine with everybody on the committee, including Mrs. Whitman. So next time, I may have more to report on committee activities. But I do want to call attention to a couple of things that happened this week. On Tuesday, Dr. Anderson, Dr. Gray and I attended a meeting that was hosted by the Greater Topeka Chamber of Commerce about a new initiative that the Kansas Air National Guard wants to put into place. I think, I think others were invited, but it, it really was a very interesting proposal because essentially what the, the Air National Guard wants to do is make Forbes a, a location for a new fleet of KC-46 jet planes. I believe I'm saying KC-46. I think that that's the designation. The ones we have there now are KC-125s. They're older models. They're, they're very quickly becoming outdated. And we have the opportunity, it, it's, it's competitive, but from, from what they presented, and there were a number of, of high-ranking officers that were part of this presentation. And, and what they presented to us was that Forbes is very, very competitive for getting this, this, this opportunity. What they wanted for us to do, the, the purpose of, of the, the Greater Topeka Chamber of Commerce in bringing us all together, and there were a number of elected officials and other administrators represented there, and, and staff for folks in Congress, and just a wide variety of, of leaders that were represented. But what they really want is some support from the Topeka and Shawnee County community. They wanted us to be knowledgeable that this process is underway. And it, it sounds like the, the mayor of Topeka has written a letter of support for, for this. And it sounds like there, there's superintendents from other districts that are writing letters of support. It'd be great if, if we could offer up a letter of support for this also. I specifically asked what the benefits would be to the community if this goes into fruition. What will life look like for everybody if this goes according to plan? And what, what they, their response was that we'll have modern aircraft, and that, that comes with some benefits and advantages of its own. But it also means that they will be able to kind of beef up the, the flight simulators for the purposes of students who are wanting to learn about modern aircraft and how to, how to fly something that, that is, is modern as compared to an outdated model of, of airplane. And then also, it, it opens up career paths for people that want to join the Air National Guard because they have an interest in aviation. They want to learn how to fly airplanes, and they want to learn how to fly modern airplanes and not airplanes that are kind of outmoded and outdated. So that's what happened on Tuesday. I, I would imagine that, that we will all probably find out more about this as the process unfolds. But, but it was great information, and, and I really appreciated the, the discussion on the issue during that meeting. Then on Wednesday, I, I know Mr. Munoz and I, because, because I saw him, even though I didn't get a chance to talk to him. On Wednesday, at Topeka High, they had the Spring Orchestra, and that was very delightful. I, Dr. Schumacher, your, your wife was there. I didn't, I didn't see you there, so don't know if you were there.
The band concert?
Uh huh. The orchestra concert.
Oh, no, I don't go to those.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't.
I'm Mr. Reynolds.
So at any rate, just wanted to shout that out. And of course, my, my daughter Olivia was in it. She's a flutist. So very, very proud to see, what's that? I, I looked it up. If you live in the United States, it's acceptable to say flutist, but if you live outside of the US, flautist is the term. Yeah, yeah. What's that? So at any rate, shout out to all the, the orchestra kids and instructors that, that put that together. That was a great presentation. And I should also mention, our, our Lieutenant Governor, Mr. David Tolan, was also there too, watching the performance. I had a chance to chat with him and his family very briefly. But it's so cool that, that the, the, the second person in charge of our state's executive branch goes to things like this to support our, our students. So that's all I have.
Mr. Munoz.
As was said earlier, we did have an Equity Council meeting. We'll, we'll have one coming up in a couple of weeks. I look forward to attending our policy meeting, given that we had to postpone that till this upcoming month. Let's take a look here. I did attend a couple of events. I've lost count of the track of fundraising events where it requires you to go to a restaurant. I've, I've been, I probably should cut back on those, but it's for a good cause, so I can't, you know, for Sage Street at Chipotle, and I think at this Scott dual language. I also stopped by Ross Elementary. They have a day, I think, once a quarter where they ask men to come in and to greet students. And so that's always fun. I'd encourage you all to sort of reach out to, to the principal there and see if anyone, really, to join us there. I stopped by Loman Hill to read to a second grade class in their library there. And, you know, I, I engaged them besides just reading. I asked them, you know, if they, what they thought about the, the story and, and what was the author trying to say. And they were very sharp kids. We have sharp kids in our district, and they, they, you know, they caught on to what, not just the story about a penguin and, and a polar bear, but about, a little bit deeper there. And so I was proud of those kids. The last thing I'll just say is to pay attention and look out for emails from Dr. Gray to come on behalf of Mr. Edwards about what's going on in the legislature. I have, you know, I think all, many people have, you know, been contacting their legislators, but it's, it's really important for the next couple of, of months. When we lose out on special education funding, that comes out of our general fund. It's another, put it another way, that comes from other things that we could be able to, to support every other student. And so we have to, we have a commitment to sort of support our special ed students. And unfortunately, that comes at the cost of, of other, other priorities. And so it's very important to make sure that the legislature understands what we think is, is important and to us as, as parents and as community members. So just to be aware and, and reach out. That's all.
Miss Schmidt.
Let's see, I think technology met, didn't we? I'll let you speak to that because you don't ever get anything by the time it gets down to you.
I have, like, Ms. Bulley's gone, so I have, like, everything tonight.
Good. I want to thank our finance department for the financial statements. I know a lot of people kind of roll their eyes at that or consider it bedtime reading, but I have a new appreciation for all these numbers. So I appreciate the work that your team puts into that. We've already spoken about health insurance. We've already spoken about policy. I'm going to let Dr. Schumacher speak on technology. So the only other thing that I want to say is that we have spring break coming up. And, you know, it's been, I feel like it's been, I don't want to say chaotic, just that, like, we've had a lot going on with all our snow days and legislature and, I don't know, just getting back into the swing after holidays. So I'm just encouraging everybody to, you know, take that time to just, take some mental health space, you know, whether that's just walking outside and absorbing some vitamin D, whether it's putting down these things and walking away from them for an hour and finding out that life really does exist when you still come back. Just, just be present in the moment. I know it's so easy to get caught up and make legislative things drama and, you know, weather days drama and extra school drama. And, you know, we should really just put that in perspective with life in general. So embrace and enjoy that spring break time.
I will, before I talk about committees, I was at Frozen Junior and enjoyed that. And I was at the band concert on Tuesday. Band concert on the 11th, which was my wife's birthday. It was a great way to spend her birthday. Shout out to Highland Park and Topeka West basketball teams. Highland Park won their game. Topeka West did come up a little bit short. They were playing the defending state champs. And they made it close, but then it looks like they had just lost. So they both had great seasons, and HP will continue to play. So I had Technology Committee, which we talked a lot about, super top secret stuff, so I can't really. No, but we did, and Ms. Bulley had touched on this last time about the upgrade to Windows 11 and the necessity and just kind of the undertaking that that'll be, but how that will make some other things easier as well. I did attend DCAC this month, and I got information from Mr. Edwards, and I got information about the accreditation. So this is like deja vu for me, tonight's meeting. But I also, they talked about their study on cell phones, and they're hoping to be ready to present for May, which would be when our work session is for cell phones, so that there could be some synergy there. But yeah, and, and thank you to Dr. Gardner for hosting. We went to Ross and enjoyed our time there. And Dr. Gray did a great job running that meeting. He has this, like, machine that's a camera and a microphone, and it looks like an owl, and it's a little bit scary, but it was great. And then I had Personnel Meeting tonight before this. And one of the things we talked about were the substitutes. And just some of the things they're trying to do around, not just recruiting, but engaging substitutes. So they have a standardized orientation on a regular basis for new subs coming in. But they've also started a newsletter that goes out to the substitutes, just with kind of general information, a little bit of almost like continuing education around like CI3T, that kind of stuff. But then also, they highlight they have a sub of, sub of the month now. They've had two subs of the month. And those types of recognitions, I think, do make big impact. So hopefully through engaging, we will hopefully help increase our fill rates a little bit more. So there's some exciting work there. And then our Finance Committee would have also been today, but that will be two weeks from today, the Thursday after we get back. So we'll have a report on that for our first meeting in April. And I think that's all I have. So I think we need a motion to adjourn.
I move the meeting adjourned.
And a second. And Dr. Beeson. And we vote by hands. Okay. And it passes, thank you.